Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 8, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please join us all in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight is reopen the public hearing for applicant Elite Real Estate Holdings, company requesting a site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a four-unit apartment building at 7 Duncan Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 4, parcel 153. Is there anyone here representing Elite Real Estate?
I'll take a motion to...
Have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that mo... I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Aye.
Ron? Myself, John Reagan, an aye. Is there anyone here representing Elite Real Estate Holdings?
Good evening. Donald O'Neil, I'm a lawyer in Worcester here on behalf of the applicant.
So you're aware that we had to reopen the hearing?
I did. I am aware of that, yes.
So I don't think we need any more going through with the plans and all that stuff.
No, I'm hoping that...
But I do have to open it up to the audience for comments.
Okay.
Just to let you know. Is there anyone from the audience that has a comment about 7 Duncan Street? Please go to the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Zonis. I live at 15 Montello Street. My question is, these are public apartments, right? Anybody can apply to rent them?
Correct.
How are they going to handle a handicap? Because I think there's a law, Americans with Disability Act, and Massachusetts has it, that any new apartments, three apartments or more, must abide by the law. Are they abiding by the law?
That would be the building commission, not us. We just do the site plan. We don't have anything to do with the handicap inside the building. I know what you're talking about, an elevator.
Without an elevator, then not only that, they said at the last meeting that each apartment would have two parking spaces, and that's a pretty small pack. Well, if it's a handicap, there are large parking spaces to allow for lift vans, and so for two of those, that shoots their plan down for the parking.
It wasn't, because the state only requires six.
Six what?
Six parking spaces.
Oh.
They have eight.
Okay, so one of them be marked handicap?
Having them do that, I don't see that to be a problem, but...
And then the building would be handicap accessible for anybody who wants to get into it, right?
Getting into the first floor, yes. I don't have any say in what goes on inside the building.
Okay.
Sticks in over that.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering how they would get around that, because, you know, they'd have to allow for the handicap, and if they don't allow for the handicap, they're discriminating against renting.
Good point, but you have to take that up with the building commission.
So how do we get the building commission to bring that forward?
Call them.
Okay. Just inquiring, I mean...
No, it's a good inquiry.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Anyone else on Duncan Street? Please go to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, Paul Noyes. I live at 2 Duncan and also own 4 Duncan. My question is, this project was voted against last time, and now it's back up. What happened?
We don't have the right to disapprove of plans that meets the requirements of all the town bylaws for a site plan approval. We have nothing to do with the building itself.
Okay, but who?
The site plan approval. It went through peer review and it passed peer review.
Okay.
So if we say no, and we found out later, the town can be sued for that, and each one of us can be sued for it. So we have no choice. If it meets the town approval, it meets the peer review, we're PEs, Graves Engineering, then we have no choice but to say okay. But that doesn't mean they don't have a lot of hurdles to jump. He'll even admit it to himself. He said they got to go through the fire department, the health department, the water department, sewer department. They got to jump through all those hoops.
Sure, but I guess my question is, is who was the one that instructed you to put it back on the agenda?
The town council.
Town council, okay. So, and just hypothetically speaking, so if you guys approve a site plan that does not meet those, like I was reading the bylaws and it looks like there's a height requirement of no maximum, no more of 25 feet, it looks like this is supposed to be, it's supposed to be for the betterment of the community, things like that. Wouldn't that open you up for litigation from the abutters?
That could be. That's your choice, but that's also the building commission. It's got nothing to do with the planning board. We just do the site layout, drainage, sewer, water, all that stuff. Make sure they write number parking spaces as Mike brought up. Make sure they got the trash, snow removal, all that stuff.
Right, but at the last meeting, it did not meet the light requirements. If I understand correctly, there was a little bit of spillage of the lighting that was over. The trash cans and stuff did not meet requirements. Has that all been addressed?
That was one of the conditions. We can approve it with that condition, that it has to meet the light approval. If they don't meet that, then they're in violation.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Anyone else for 7 Duncan Street? No one? Anybody on the plan, anyone have a comment?
John, I just want to, we make the motion to approve the site plan. As it sits here, it says, it seems as if it's including our approval on an four-room, an additional four-room apartment, a fourth.
Apartments are already approved. We have no jurisdiction on that either.
I don't want to vote in favor of approving that fourth apartment. I'll vote with the site plan with all the conditions, but not on that.
That was, that's not our, within our purview to vote on. It's already been approved for four. That's the building commission. It's out of our hands. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Glenn, Jason? Anyone else from the audience? Make one more. Please go to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Monica Hamilton-McCarthy, 24 Carroll Street. Did you say it's already been approved to add an extra apartment?
They're allowed to put four units in there, but you got to talk to the building commission about that. That's got nothing to do with us.
So the building commissioner has already approved it for four units?
I don't know. You have to ask him.
Oh, okay. Nice. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else in the audience have any more questions regarding 7 Duncan Street? Being none, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron? Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is a vote. Now we have a motion to approve, as submitted, with all the caveats I put on it last time, all the conditions I put on it, which was, to give you a rough idea, it'll be in the meeting minutes that Darlene has. Conservation Commission, Building Commissioner, Fire Department, Sewer Department, Water Department, Highway Department. You have to meet all the requirements.
I move to approve this plan with all the conditional requirements that were set forth at the previous hearing, including the cleanup of the light pollution.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is applicant Eric C. Dory and Sarah G. Slade requesting a special permit under 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for Hammer Lot at 46 Oxford Street, North Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 4, parcel 310. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I move to open the hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is an aye. Hearing is now open. Is there anyone representing, hi Todd?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here on behalf of the applicants, Eric and Sarah. We're talking about 46 Oxford Street North, and this is an application for a special permit for Hammerhead Lot. So this is a RA zoning district. The land is currently vacant. I'm sure everybody took a drive-by and has an idea what the property looks like, but it's 28,654 square feet. So I thought what made sense to do, I just have a couple of little slides here that I can walk you through, just to show you. This is just an overview and where the site's located. Again, seeking the approval for the Hammerhead Lot. The GIS map shows how the property works. So it goes into the property. It's 50 feet wide or so at the front, meets the frontage requirement, which I'll walk through in a second, then then opens up in the back, which is kind of a classic Hammerhead Lot configuration. It is currently, you know, pretty much a wooded parcel. Show you a picture of essentially the front, the front area where the driveway would come through.
The telephone pole is in the way of the driveway, is it?
We have, I mean, we have 50 feet to work with over there. So this is the, this is the survey plan from Jarvis, which is going to show you the, you know, it's got the required frontage. It's got the circular diameter, the circle diameter that we've got to fulfill. It's got a general location of the home on the plan, and it's got the, you know, the lot area on there for you, all in one place. So this is straight from the bylaw. The, you know, the purpose of the provision is to, you know, have optimal limited development of existing lots that have deep backland. This is to encourage the efficient and current future use of land to ensure adequate access to the lots and help ensure the development is compatible with the adjoining developments. So you've got the special permit criteria that are in Section 5.3.2, which are right here. I'm happy to go through each of them. It might make sense for me to do that, if you're willing to indulge. So each Hammerhead Lot is required to have 50 feet of frontage minimum. This parcel has been, was created on Oxford Street North with 50 feet of frontage. Each of these Hammerhead Lots must have double the required minimum lot size in the zone. So it's 10,000 square foot lot sizes would mean we'd need 20,000. In this case, we have 28,654, so not quite triple, but pretty close to three times the minimum for the lot, for the area, but more than 8,500 feet, more than what is required under the bylaw. You can't have two consecutive, you know, Hammerhead Lots, and this is not consecutive with any other Hammerhead Lots. There are conforming, single-family lots to each side, one of which is Eric's father, who lives on, is it 48? 44. One of the reasons that they're pursuing this parcel, move next door to dad. So 5.3.2.4, you know, requirement to have the 100-foot circle, and it's essentially to make sure you can fit in there with setback requirements and that you're not too close to any particular neighbor. We meet that requirement as shown on the plan. You see the circled out area there in the back. So the Hammerhead Lot must cross, must be across the frontage of the lot, access to it. So we're going to access off of North Oxford Street. There was a street, there is a street close by, but it doesn't appear to be, to be an option, at least at the moment, for access to the home. So it'll be 50 feet of frontage there, come through that access point. 5.3.2.6, it's going to be for a single-family residence, which this will be. The proposed house location can't be in the handle of the Hammerhead Lot, which is, you know, the smaller area up towards the front. It's got to be in the back portion, which it is. That's where it's suggested to be sighted. Then the last provision here, 5.3.2.9, it can't be further subdivided, and it won't be. So we can happily agree to that condition. Mr. Chairman, with that, I can take your questions.
Anyone from the audience having a question over 46 Oxford Street? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Wendy Stebbins. I live at 14 Buttonwood Lane, which is a dead-end street, and I would like to leave it that way. So I'm hoping that you decide to go from Oxford Street up to this piece of property without disturbing the dead-end street.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Well, he said there was a street available, but they weren't looking at that at the moment.
No, but they can.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking.
If they have the frontage on Buttonwood, which it appears that they do, then they could come, I think they have to come back before the board to get that approval, if I'm not mistaken, right, Adam?
They don't have to talk to DPW about that.
It would be DPW in order to be able to do that, because you're extending off a road.
So they're going off of Oxford Street?
As it stands right now, I believe that's the plan, isn't it, Todd, coming off Oxford Street?
Yes, you know, we wanted to make sure we complied as closely as we can with the bylaw. You know, the Buttonwood Lane Road and to use that particular access area would actually be preferred, I think, for the homeowners, but that's not the request on the table right now. So the request is to use the Oxford Street frontage to drive the driveway up.
Thank you.
Anyone else on 46 Oxford Street? Being none, Glenn, do you have any questions?
Yes, I was just wondering what style home they're going to be building? Will there be a Cape or a ranch or?
Sure, why don't you come up, Sarah?
Sarah Slade, potential homeowner. We are looking to build either a ranch or a colonial or a bungalow.
Nothing gigantic.
Questions for me while I'm up here?
Ryan, do you have any questions for her? Do you have any more questions for Glenn? Do you have any questions, Jason? No, all set. Anybody have any questions on, anymore, anybody else from the audience have questions for 46 Oxford Street? Being none, Glenn, do you have any questions for Todd?
What would be, if they changed their mind later and wanted to try to use the Buttonwood access, what would the process be on that?
I think as John suggested, one of the issues is DPW and kind of extending, you know, either extending off of Buttonwood there or doing some sort of further extension of Buttonwood itself. It's a fairly narrow street up there. I don't know if you drove up there, and there's existing single-family homes in there, so that was part of the consideration. I think the, you know, in my mind, it was a good idea to use Buttonwood. I think, you know, using that instead of using Oxford Street as your driveway is probably a preferred thing for a homeowner and probably, you know, for the, from the town perspective, having traffic flow through Buttonwood and come out that intersection there rather than another driveway. But it is planned to be off of North Oxford Street for now. We can't just, we couldn't just drive a driveway through at any given point.
Ryan, any questions?
If you decided to change, they'd have to come back before us.
They'd have to go to the DPW.
Conversation with DPW to make sure that they don't have a particular issue with it, you know, they would have...
They have frontage on Buttonwood?
They do. They do. Yep, and it's...
The only thing I would...
Looks like it's 60 feet there.
Only thing I would think, I would want to guess, coming off Buttonwood, where it's a dead-end street now, the town may not allow it to stay a dead-end street. If you come off the end of that, it may make you put a cul-de-sac in.
It's an existing condition, but certainly adding another single-family to that, you know, to Buttonwood as a dead end, you know...
It would be up to the DPW, but I think they have the right to do that if they wanted.
Right, well, that's why we're proposing off of North Oxford Street, because that, you know, that gets us the certainty that we have a parcel to build here.
Are they going to tie in to top water? Sewer on Oxford Street, North Oxford?
Those, yeah, I mean, that's, I think, the location where it's appropriate. I don't, I don't think we've studied where the utility locations are exactly.
There is sewer and water on North Oxford Street for sure. I don't know how far it goes up Buttonwood, but if it's up Buttonwood, it's probably a two-inch main, so I come off of Oxford Street, which is probably an eight-inch main.
Yeah, I mean, some of these issues are sort of future planning issues. I know the member asked what style home, and they've talked about approximate house size. They know they can fit it there, but I think the further definition of whether it's going to be a bungalow, a ranch, cottage, those sorts of things are TBD.
It's not going to be 100 feet long.
No, I mean, it's, you know, it's going to have a limited footprint area, fit within the diameter circle that's back there, that's on the plan.
Anyone have any other questions? Any other questions from the audience?
Eric Dory, potential purchaser and builder on this lot. This Buttonwood keeps getting brought up quite a bit in this conversation. That is my ideal way of going, but for the ease in pushing this forward, I understand going the route we're going. I have a six- and a four-year-old that I'd much rather be playing on Buttonwood. You know, I didn't give consideration to the cul-de-sac that you mentioned, but she stated that she wanted it to remain a dead-end road. There is nowhere for this road to go at the end of it, besides to this parcel of property, so it's still a dead-end.
Stay a dead-end road.
So there is no...
You'd never be allowed to put a driveway through from Buttonwood all the way to Oxford.
Correct, so just, you know, ideally, that's with a six- and a four-year-old that eventually are going to be driving. I'd rather than pulling out on a stop sign versus pulling out on Oxford Street North. I grew up in 44, and once I moved in, I was 16, 17 years old. I know how dangerous that road is, but it's just something for consideration. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? No further questions from the board? May I have a motion, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing?
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is a vote. May I have a motion to approve the Hammerhead Lot at 46 Oxford Street?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is a vote.
Thank you. Shut off.
Time's all fast, Pearl.
Died. Next on the agenda tonight is applicant Eric C. Dory, I'm sorry. Next on the agenda tonight is applicant Mass Futures LLC requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for 21 two-family dwelling condo development at 25 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 10, parcel 78. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I move to open the hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, an aye. It is a vote. Hearing is now open. I know you're representing him now, Todd, so...
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Again, Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here on behalf of the applicant. Tim Johnson's here with me in the audience. He's the property owner. Garrett Horstall is the civil engineer from Kelly Engineering is also here. And so let's talk about 25 Vinyl Street. So we are here with this project, 42-unit duplex-style project. Just so you know, we are scheduled to go before zoning board shortly. We have not been there yet. We need special permit for them for the use. We have been before Conservation Commission on a preliminary basis, have not, you know, finished that process, but that hearing process is open. We understand we need to come through your board for site plan approval. You know, we have a couple of things that we know we won't complete with you tonight, but we did want to have this meeting. We wanted to talk to you about the project, gather any feedback, insight from your board, from members of the public. The Graves Engineering peer review is not completed yet. I think it's been under, you know, it just went underway, and we are still in the process of, we need to submit the traffic study. We expect that report any day now, and it'll be submitted as soon as we have that. So we'd like to discuss in detail traffic at the next meeting, and we'd like to figure out those civil engineering issues that Graves may have, obviously, once they've done their review. So we thought it was important to come in, gather feedback. I know typically the board has useful comments that we need to integrate into the plan set, and we'd like to start to just work through the process. We will have to go to zoning board and get through that process, so we will, we would then be delayed coming back to you a little bit. But again, these were scheduled meetings based on the initial filings with zoning board. We did not have the first hearing with them. We're going to the next hearing with them. So we got a little, you know, bogged down with the schedule a bit, but we thought it was important to come in and have this first public hearing with your board. So the proposal is to, you know, to erect a series of, it's 21 buildings, but 42 units. This is in the Residence A zoning district. We've got a 12.7, you know, acre parcel that we're dealing with. This is the GIS map. As you can see, it's down at the end of Vinyl Street. I'm sure all the neighbors know exactly where it is, existing single-family, you know, sits in there now. There were some other structures on-site over the years, but it's really just the exist, the single-family that's back there now. This is just an aerial coming down past Julia Bancroft towards the site with Nancy Drive on the right. This is an aerial view, which gives you a little bit of an idea of the site area that we have to deal with. The purple areas are, there's orange-ish markers on there, which are the wetland flags, the wetland areas, I should say. Then there's the pinkish area, which is sort of the edge of the wetlands. Then there's the purple lines, which are wetland buffer zones. So it's important when we look at the project impacts to look at those areas and figure out from a planning perspective where we sit, which is what the next plan kind of shows you, which is the development area, coming in, one street in, two-way traffic, in a circular pattern with the 42 units. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett to kind of walk you through some of the site features.
Thank you, Todd. Good evening. Garrett Horstall with Kelly Engineering Group. So as Todd mentioned, it's about a 12.9 acre parcel in the Res A district, currently partially developed with the single-family home, access via an existing gravel driveway that continues on and accesses the home. It is somewhat disturbed in the middle of the site with vegetated wooded buffers around, and then there's residential properties to the north, the east, the south, and then to the west is a town-owned field with ball fields and the aforementioned school, now senior housing as well. So just some elevation perspective, this site sits in a bowl compared to the surrounding properties. The existing grade in the, you know, relatively flatter areas of the site ranges from 506 to 512. For reference, up at Oakwood Ave, at the property line, it's about 550 elevation-wise, about 40 feet difference from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill for the proposed development. And again, along Rockland, it's about 550 to 530, 530 being closer to this isolated wetland. Again, a pretty substantial grade change from the abutting properties to the proposed property. Along Nancy Drive, it's about elevation 520 to the back of these homes here. So the, as Todd mentioned, the proposal is to extend the driveway, be a 24-foot-wide, two-way access driveway. We have run the appropriate fire apparatus through the site and submitted the appropriate exhibit with our filing package. The parking proposed here is two spaces per unit, so there's a space within the garage access, and then directly behind that would be the second vehicle parking space for the homeowner. And then in addition, there's 18 spaces that we've located throughout the site for visitor parking, guest parking, if you have your relative over, or, you know, grandson sleeps over, that type of thing, throughout the site. So we have thought about that, in addition to, obviously, the two spaces per unit. And then, as I mentioned, the site has been designed with topography in mind, which is why I went over those elevation grades. There's only one retaining wall proposed. It's on the north side of these three units here. And then we have kept the remaining vegetated buffers throughout the site as most, as best as we could to work with the topography through the use of some raised... as best as we could to work with the topography through the use of some raised second floor basements, using the retaining wall of the backside of the house on these, on these few homes that bound the exterior of the site. That allows for the existing vegetated buffer to basically remain in shape and limits, limits the amount of exterior grading on the backside of these homes. And again, only one retaining wall proposed for these and it's about two to six feet in height on the back of this. And then to limit any other disturbance associated with the access driveway, we have retaining walls on both sides. One, we are close to the wetland edge and we're holding the edge of disturbance on this side. So there's a fill wall on this side and then a long Nancy drive to maintain as much vegetation as possible along this abutter. We have proposed another retaining wall portions of it are filled. There's a small portion of cut wall. So, and there's also a six foot high vinyl privacy fence proposed along the top of the retaining wall proposed here. And we did provide two drainage culverts, which Graves will review further to provide drainage to permit, to maintain the existing drainage patterns. As I mentioned, these are elevation 520, we're lower. So there's two cross culverts below the proposed driveway to handle that runoff. And the whole site has been designed with several subsurface recharge systems to promote groundwater infiltration, recharge and water quality components, all in compliance with the state stormwater standards and the town stormwater regulations as well, which I'm sure Graves will review in much further detail to ensure compliance as well. The site is, we're going to be served by public water and sewer with connections out to Vinyl Street. We do have a proposed pump station for the sewer, which should be located roughly here so it can gather the lateral runs to the homes. And we do have a lighting program that's been proposed. We do have shielded lights at, at all locations. They're all shielded. They're only 16 foot high poles to minimize any pole heights and any light spillage off of properties. And as Todd mentioned, we are, you know, in front of a couple of other boards as well. The zoning board and conservation. We have received some several town comments, which we will respond to appropriately along with the Graves review once that is received. And again, we're happy to answer any comments or technical questions tonight. And I'll let Todd finish up.
Yeah, just a few, just a few more notes quickly before. So I didn't say it for the record, you know, this is a, this is a market rate unit project, which is meant for homeownership. So these will be condominiums, which will have a homeowners association in place, which will obviously maintain roads, you know, structures within the facility that need to be, to be maintained. So again, this is a market rate project, 42 units will be homeownership. Just to give you an idea, we did, you know, we did bring along floor plans. This is essentially the garage, garage level and below. So, you know, there, there is, this is the more, this is what I wanted to show you. This is the first floor plan, which shows these are, these are first, first floor masters. So first floor master, living room, kitchen upstairs with, with two additional, with two additional bedrooms. Why, why this design? I mean, I think when, when I talked to Tim, the developer, you know, Auburn had a housing study done in 2023. He talked about the need for different kinds of housing. And we think this addresses one of them, which gives some people first floor living capability. You know, we, we don't exactly know who will buy these units, but with that in mind, I think it tends towards, tends towards a little bit of an older audience. But again, we'll have to wait to see. This is not proposed as a 55 and over project. It's market rate, you know, open for anybody. And it's again, home ownership project. We just have a couple of elevations. We showed one at the beginning. We got the front, front side, rear. And then we hop back to where, kind of where we started. So that's, that's the presentation for tonight. Again, we'll have a traffic study go in. We can have the traffic engineer present at the next hearing if that's what people want, want to talk about. I know, I know that there are some concerns about traffic at this particular location in the intersection with Oxford Street North. I understand that. We're hoping to get into that in great detail at the next hearing with you.
Anyone from the audience have any questions regarding this development on Vinyl Street? No one? To the board, any questions? Glenn, you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Who, who prepared this handwritten sheet for us? Do we know?
Can't see that. I pass it over, I can't see it.
Oh, this is the DCG. This is, um, we meet, this is the internal group at town meeting at town hall where we meet with developers before they come to the boards. So these are just notes from that meeting.
On that, on that sheet though, there's a word here that I can't quite make out. About halfway down on the right, it says fence slash W A T.
Waddles.
Waddles?
Yeah, that's the, the straw. Things you put at the front of the silt fence.
And also one other thing, it says, uh, under that, it says two-way road. Can't use the opposite lane to meet turn requirements. Is that?
That'd be the fire, fire department comments.
Okay, is that saying that the road isn't wide enough to get a fire engine down or?
Um, I don't, they have, they've seen these plans, are they have a comment on these plans yet? So I'll ask them, I'll follow up with them for comments.
Fire department was present at the DCG meeting, as were, you know, water department, water district, I should say, sewer. Actually, I don't have the attendance list, but I'm sure Adam can tell you what a typical, who's typically there. And plans get submitted to each of those departments. We haven't seen comment letters from any of, any of them yet, I don't believe. Actually, that's not true. We did see water sewer and somebody else. But we will address any of those questions that are on there. And there are specifications from the sewer department regarding the sewer pump station. We understand that, you know, those specifications, if they're not already in the plans, will be in the plans. So we'll, we'll work through any of those comment letters as they come.
Any more questions, Glenn?
Just one, is it going to wind up being a private road or is it going to?
Yes. Yep.
Ron, any questions?
So why, I would like to see it become a full town road up to town standards. But why isn't that?
Throughout the development?
From where it starts to where it goes up into the houses? Why is that? Why are they not required to have 19,000 square feet as each two family has in town anywhere else? I mean, how is, how are we, I, I'm not sure. I've never seen one like this where it's presented like this.
So
I'm barely.
We actually have, we did a calculation on this to, to understand the issue a little bit ourselves. 19,000 square feet per duplex, right? Which is two units. This, this lot could actually have, could, could contain as many as 58 units if it were maximizing the, the lot area that's available. So.
So you have enough dry land to put 58 units?
We have enough lot area to put 58 units.
But dry land where you could actually construct them?
We have enough lot area to support 58.
Yes, of that, Ron, is no.
No. Again, I'd like to see the road up to town standards. You said, I think it was 24 feet wide. And, uh, yeah, especially being in a wet area where it is. And, uh, also on the parking, I couldn't hear him talking too fast for me.
There were 18 guest visitor overflow spaces sprinkled throughout.
I mean, at each unit.
One in the garage and one behind the garage.
One inside the garage.
One inside the garage and one, one in the driveway. Yep.
That's it for me for now.
I only count 17. I only count 17 spots. I got two.
We might be bad at math, but we thought that was the number. Apologies if it's 17. Do you know, Garrett?
17. 17.
If it's 17, it's 17. I apologize. We're trying to fool anybody. It's just we thought, we thought we counted 18.
So to Ron's point, what, what's it going to take to get this road up to town standards?
Refer to Garrett on that.
So the existing Vinyl Street public way is only 20 feet wide, roughly to, to here. So we're proposing to improve it to 24 feet, roughly starting through here and all through the wetland crossing. Regards to upgrading to town standards, we'd have to review the, you know, subdivision rules and regs further relative to, you know, sidewalks, curbing, appropriate whiffs. But the intent is to maintain it to be a private way. But really we're restricted by Vinyl Street being 20 feet. So anything we do in, on our property is an improvement to the existing condition within the public way closer to Bancroft School.
Why the intent is to remain a private way?
Subdivide.
And I ask that because I've seen other projects here where five, six years, when you guys are all, it's all said and gone, it's sold. The, the residents come back and complain, they want to make it a public road and then it's an issue. So if we can get it out the way now, then it's not an issue.
So I think Garrett's right. I mean, we'd have to look at the subdivision rules and regulations because that's going to govern street width, how, how, how wide it needs to be with sidewalks, et cetera. We obviously have a pinch point at the bottom of the, you know, the bottom.
Piece here.
You know, there's wetland considerations in there. It really probably can't get a whole lot wider than what it is proposed to be. I think that's probably a fair statement through the development.
Todd, you said it was 24 wide there?
24.
Even at the pinch point?
No, it's 20 at the pinch point.
So.
It goes from 20 on vinyl to 24 to 20, back to 24.
That right underneath preparation.
That's right on sheet three.
In addition to that, we're also providing, this came from previous comments, I believe, with the conservation commission, a five foot wide sidewalk on this side through here for pedestrian access. And DPW has actually issued a comment to extend the sidewalk further closer to the school as well as part of their comment letter. So just in addition to that, there is a five foot wide sidewalk provided as well.
I'm not arguing that you're not making, you're making, not making improvements. I, I see it, I agree. I just would like at least, even if you have to make it a public road up until the pinch point and then make it a private road there, if you, if you want to make a comment, so Mike, please, thank you.
Tim Johnson for 25 Vinyl. So the, the reason that we're going to keep it private is because this is going to be unlike a Nancy drive or something that is private. And I know what you're saying, everybody goes away, the road dilapidates, everything like that. But this is going to be an HOA community. So there is going to be a governed central area with it being condos and not single family. They'll be responsible for paying a monthly fee at an HOA, which will help maintain and move that forward. Unlike what, you know, regular residential house lot would be. Every homeowner is just kind of fending for themselves. So the HOA will have to maintain that going forward. That, that's the only reason that if it stays a private way, it's less tax on the town to be able to take care of it. And it's up to the HOA to be able to fund that through their residents. So, thank you.
I still think it should be up to town standards. You can't make it 24 feet plus the sidewalk, then maybe you can't build it. So we should just conform to whatever somebody brings in and says, oh, this is all I got. So we'll just let them do it with that. I think it should be up to town standards and 24 feet with one sidewalk. That's how I feel.
That's, I'm gonna just let you keep going with your comments, Mr. Chairman. Rest of the board members.
So on page three, it shows the pinch point where it goes from 24 to 20, back to 24. So at that pinch point, if you own that property on the north side, where it says 20 foot wide, then it goes to 24 feet wide. If you own that property, couldn't you make that road wider there to 24?
Are you referring to this green area right here? Just want to make sure we're.
No, it's the second house down from Nancy Drive.
Through, through here?
Second house down, keep going. Next house right there, right in front of that house to the left of your cursor.
We could certainly extend it further, a few feet, it appears, without having wetland impact.
Well, even if there's a wetland impact, you have enough room to replicate that wetland you take away. That's what the conservation commission will make you do.
Understood, yeah. We would not probably be impacting 5,000 square feet, which would be, you know, water quality cert trigger. We could certainly review that further if that's the board's request. And, you know, review that as an alternate and.
Can you just describe, Garrett, what's on the other side?
So on the right-hand side, we have a, a wall with a six foot high fence and then a, you know, a few feet to the tree line on Nancy Drive. And on the left-hand side, it's a similar situation, wall with a guardrail just to prevent any vehicles and, you know, sidewalk, I forgot to say first, and then, then several feet at the closest point to, to the wetland through here. So there is an opportunity to widen this road a little bit further. And obviously, you know, we could keep going to, you know, impact wetlands and obviously would have to coordinate that with the, the commission as well as this board as well. But we can certainly look, look into it.
On that sheet three also, you show the sidewalk where it only goes so far. What is the sidewalk going on the entire development?
So currently we're stopping it here, just really, we only have 20 feet behind the garage. So you have the second vehicle parked there typically. I know cars are getting smaller, but there's still larger SUVs. You know, we could continue that through the development. You just might have to, you know, walk around the back end of a car if it's parked in the driveway. But we could certainly extend that around the development, create a loop.
You can't park a, a car so it blocks the sidewalk. You can't do that. This is a safety issue. There's going to be kids down there playing in the road. There's no sidewalk for them to walk on all the way around. And you mentioned street lighting, but I couldn't find them on the plans anywhere. Tell me which sheet that's on.
There's a separate lighting plan that we received after the filing was made.
What is the wetlands acreage versus the dry acreage you're going to develop on? You're good about giving us the entire lot, but you're not good about telling us how much dry area is you're going to develop on.
I'd, I'd have to come back with that exact number for you.
Disturbed area is that we're going to, the project area?
I, roughly we're disturbing about, I think, three acres through here. So, you know, of the 12.9, you know, 20% or so.
Three acres for the houses?
Roughly, yes.
That's a lot of houses for three acres. So again, on, on page six, you have the structure there that's not labeled. It's on the grading plan. It's really a little indent is coming down Vinyl Street. I don't know, nobody puts house numbers on, so we can't tell you what house number it's across from. I just want to know why that drain on Vinyl Street goes directly to the wetlands instead of going through the separator system and the ground recharge system? Why does that go straight across?
We're providing a separate easement for the town. Typically, the towns don't want to be connected into the recharge system from dealing with other municipalities. You could certainly coordinate further with the DPW.
That's town property? That's a town catch basin?
Yes.
On page seven, I have a list of five test pits. I can only find one on the plan.
There's two in the.
I mean.
Two, two within the recharge.
I'm looking at a half-sized plan, so it's very difficult. I had to look at this one magnifying glass. with a magnifying glass to figure out what's what.
There's two within the further recharge system in front of thirteen, fifteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. There's one pit, there's one pit at least in each recharge system proposed, but there's two in the larger one at the rear of the site with the sort of the bullseye target mark.
That's a test pit right there. Well, TP on any other plan that I know is called a turning point, not a test pit. And it shows a boring, that's an insignia for a boring, not a test hole. So the other question I'd like to know is, why when you go, look just past the gate, there's a test hole that's still dug there, it's not backfilled. Why's that?
I'd have to ask the operator.
Just ask for somebody to fall in that. I mean, there's no trespassing signs down there anyway. You come in from all over around that lot, and the kid walks up to there in the dark. You can tell by the, whatever happened down the house there years ago, it's all spray painted, half torn apart. They're in there. They're still in there, I'm sure. So if they walk up there and fall in the hole, you're liable. It takes five minutes to fill the hole. I don't know why it wasn't filled. I think there's water in the bottom of it too. How deep, I don't know. On the grading plan on page seven, I'm looking at the back of these houses, and I don't see a provision to drain the water away from the back of the house. It looks like it runs right into the back of every single home, even off the retaining wall on the north side.
The house has spot grades to grade away from the back.
There's what?
There's spot grades behind each house
Yeah.
that shows the grade away from the foundation to a swell behind them, and it grades to several area drains or swells behind the homes.
I don't really see a swell, but, you know, a swell has, you know, you bring it down, bring it down, bring it down, so you can see all the contours, not just spot grades. So the swell isn't really identified on the back. But where does it go from the swell?
On purpose, it, all of the recharge, all of the runoff goes into the area drain collection system and then goes into the recharge systems.
So on the east side, from where it says C sheet six for symbol legend, all the way up that side, where's the collection system for that? The one that's in front of thirteen and fourteen? And how does it get there?
There's a high point roughly in front of twenty-four and twenty-three, and the ones behind twenty-five and twenty-six, that goes to the recharge system closer on the west-hand side of the site. And then roughly the split goes back to the recharge system on the northern east side of the site from behind twenty-two onward. So there's a high point in the road that drains the front lawns of the area drains, as well as the catch basins within the roadway.
Worried about the roadway portion. I'm worried what's behind the house. See, we've had this issue before. And people come back after the fact. There's one up off of Bryn Mawrav. The water runs right through the yards. There's another one on top of Packer Cloud Hill. It runs right through the basements because it wasn't provided for at the time. So I just want to make sure if any of these get built, people don't wind up having water in their basements.
I can say that there is a swell provided behind these homes with sloping away from the foundation, approximately ten feet out on most of them, and it slopes away from the home.
Between unit twenty-four and twenty-five, I see something that has a rim elevation of five twenty-two, but I don't know what it is.
That's an area drain.
It's an area drain. So that area drain goes where?
That, that one fault, that one ties into the roof drain collection system and goes to the recharge system where TP number two is.
So on the, when you're down on your end of the street, the part that you own, past the recharge system up by where Vinyl Street goes from a public street to a private street, it's, had a proposed head wall on each side, and it drains, I assume it's draining some of the roadway right into the swamp, the wetlands. Just to the left where it says Vinyl Street on the page, page eight?
On, oh, page eight. You're referring to the two cross culverts underneath the road?
Correct. I don't see a splash pad for them. I just see a head wall. That's it.
There's a flare-end section shown.
What's after the flare-end section? You can't just leave a flare-end section out of the wall.
Riprap apron. It's riprap shown on the plan.
I don't see where it shows riprap anywhere, not on page eight.
On the legend, it says riprap.
It doesn't show riprap. You really can't tell that from the drawing. Again, I apologize. I'm looking at half-size plans. Very difficult.
Understood. These are thirty by forty-two, so not twenty-four. They're a little difficult to read, eleven by seventeen. We can certainly provide more full-size copies for the board if that's their request.
So you have on page nine, there's a lot of roof drain system in this, in this area. One in front of the house, one in the back of every, every unit, correct?
Yes. That is to ensure that, you know, the parting is limited, and the roof drains are properly collected and directed to recharge systems.
So up at the top of the page, on the north side, to the left, where it says storm drain by sanitary sewer crossing, storm drain invert, is that supposed to be the roof drain? Because that's what it's crossing is the roof drain.
Are you referring to number eight, number nine, or?
Yeah, right, right behind number seven and eight.
Yep, there's a crossing called out there, yes.
Right, it calls a storm drain invert, and then it says it's eight inch. Then it says the sanitary sewer is four inch. You can't put a four-inch sewer service in. They haven't put four-inch sewer services since the early seventies. Can't do it. It's gotta be, and you only have one sewer service for each two units, one sewer service per building. So if the guy on the left clogs up the toilet and it backs up, and then the next guy tells, what do you do?
So the plumbing plan is not fully developed yet, but we can certainly provide two service connections for each, with six inches if that's, you know, the request.
Six inches, it should be six inches. I know it's going down to a pump station, but nobody does four inch, especially for a double unit.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering, I was trying to find where the snow storage is?
It's shown on the layout plan as the clouded sheets, I believe, sheets four and five, I believe. Throughout the site, there's just, there's several clouded areas.
See a cloud area, it's almost the wrong, near the right.
Can you further define that? I'm on sheet five. Where are the areas?
These are very small snow storage areas.
All right, where they are.
In each of the landscaped islands in front of the homes, there's clouded snow storage areas shown.
Those the ones in the scrolled lines?
Yeah.
Yes, they're smaller than the tree line in the back. They're smaller.
They're in back of the parking spaces in some spots and...
Yeah, they use the same cloud as they use for the tree line, unfortunately, so it's, it's confusing.
It certainly looks inadequate.
There's larger areas along the roadway, and we can certainly provide, you know, larger areas throughout the site, too.
What about waste mitigation?
Say that again?
Waste mitigation in terms of waste pickup, is that gonna be?
Through the homeowners association, they'll contract with a private hauler.
So where would the dumpster be?
They don't necessarily have to have a dumpster. I mean, these...
No, they don't, but most of, as you know, Pine Ledge has dumpsters.
Not exactly the prettiest site out there. Typically, I mean, these projects are built with, same as you have in your home, you know, the bucket. It's just not a town-issued bucket. You know, having dumpster, to me, invites just people throwing lots of big stuff away and causing problems. We're gonna have them contract with a private hauler.
So on page ten, did you want a clarification? Like I said, I'm looking at half-size drawings. Right above where it says Vinyl Street, second Vinyl Street down, going from the north arrows to the east, is that dark line the edge of the right-of-way? In between the, I think it's a wetlands designation.
The thicker line?
Yeah, the dark thicker line.
That is the proposed retaining wall. The dash line sort of right on the retaining wall is that private way.
What does the dark line represent again?
The dark, the darker thicker line is the retaining wall.
It's not labeled on that page, so it's confusing. I also noticed on the, sorry, utility plan, you have a six-inch water main for forty-two units. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did receive, I think, a comment from the water department. They requested an eight-inch main.
Put in a six, that's why I'm asking the question. On your guide rail, you show a steel cable guide rail system? Is that allowed by the state or the town? Because every town puts in the, you know, either the core tan or the galvanized.
The wood post and rail, I mean, it's been used on hundreds of projects throughout the state.
That's about the wood posts and rail. I asked about the, you have in here a wire.
That's, that's the reinforcing wire behind the post. That's, there's a wire behind the wood.
You have a horizontal piece of wood parallel with the road?
Steel cables going into the ground, yes.
Or you're just doing the ends?
The wire goes behind the guardrail completely.
So I'm looking at the section of the fence. You got the, you got the guide rail, and you got the post. Where's the wire go? Does it go from post to post? Does it go down to the ground?
Goes behind the post, and when it terminates, it's going into the ground, the guardrail.
So does it terminate beyond the end of the guide rail?
Yes.
You can't do that.
Well, it, it goes into the...
You can't do that. That's against the law. That's why they have bull noses on the end of guardrails.
It dies...
That'll send a car right up and over.
It dies in the ground at the post is what I'm saying, but the tension line itself is extending further. I think that's what I meant.
So you got your end post, your line's gonna come out like that for your tension line?
It's right at the end of the post and goes right into the ground.
It's not gonna be straight down. It's gotta be at an angle.
It is at an angle, and we...
How far away from that post does that end terminate?
We can, we can modify the detail to show the, the wire terminating right at the post in the middle so that it ensures that there's nothing exposed.
Okay, moving along. Page twelve, you show three inches of pavement for the roadway? No, that ain't gonna happen. Two and a half and an inch and a half. It's gonna be a road, not a driveway. And then your construction tracking pad? You better get a bigger one because you got three-quarter inch crust stone down there now. It's not, it's not gonna hold anything. You gotta put in two and a half inch to three inch rock at the end of, end of where your access is, right at the end of the pavement down from the, where you have the gate down for so many feet.
So three-inch rock you're requesting?
Yeah, it's usually two and a half, three inch minus. Because the three-quarter stone just gets caught up in the wheels with the mud. It just gets tracked up the road. I notice you have a light pole detail base. We don't have light poles on the plans because you just submitted the lighting plan or gonna submit the lighting plan. Are those gonna be precast or cast in place?
They're typically precast from the supplier.
On your rejector station, the one that goes in the middle of the pavement, right down at the beginning, right at the end of the development, I see you have a four-by-four hatch. What kind of hatch is that gonna be?
It'd be a galvanized steel hatch typically.
It's gonna be aluminum. It's gonna be a Bilco hatch.
For access, yes.
It's not gonna hold up. The minute a pile goes down that road, private or public, it doesn't matter. It's gonna rip the handles right off and turn up the corners. I've been down that road before. You should use something like a runway hatch.
We can, I can look at moving the hatch to the landscaped area as well to ensure that it doesn't interfere with...
You got to move a whole pump station in the landscape area.
Sorry, what was that?
They moved the pump sta, the entire pump station off the paved road.
Yeah, that's what I meant by moving the hatch.
On your sewer detail, the water and sewer trench detail, you show, I don't know, it's compacted screen gravel. What do you mean by that? You mean screen processed gravel, three-quarter stone? What is it? Because usually on sewer, it's stone, and on water mains, it's sand.
We can specify whatever the DPW or the board requests on here. So if there's any specific recommendations, we're glad to incorporate them into the plan.
Three-quarter on PVC, HDPE, sand on, on water mains. And then on your, on your hydrant setting detail, I don't see anything, I don't see a thrust block behind the tee. I don't see any mega lug joints.
So the thrust block detail is separate, so you have the thrust block on the, okay.
You have one behind the hydrant, but I don't see any mega lugs holding the whole thing together. It won't be that, it won't be a short run, depending on which side of the street you put it on. So you said you already talked to the sewer department?
We did receive comments from them, yes.
What'd they say for the gravity main going to the pump station? What size, eight inch?
They wanted, I believe, a six to their, to the, to the gravity to a six, and then we further designed the pump station with them, in coordination with them.
You're gonna allow a six-inch main for forty-two houses?
I believe that's what they requested, but they also wanted two percent slope, so we might be going with an eight-inch main and...
All sewers, this is from that, from them, all sewers from each building shall be six-inch PVC. All trunk line sewers shall be a minimum of eight inch. So that detail's gotta change for your ejector station. You have a six-inch line coming in. You have a precast drain manhole section as well, and you're gonna use HDPE pipe for drainage?
Correct.
Well, mortar doesn't stick to HDPE pipe. You have a mortar joint where it enters the manhole. That should be a Corin seal boot.
Corin seal boot, yeah.
Is it gonna be ADS pipe, or is it gonna be smooth ball HDPE?
It'd be ADS N12 pipe.
Is that, is that the rib pipe?
Yes.
I don't know if you can get a Corin seal boot to fit that. They had to make some other arrangement there. Because of the water table down there, it's gonna just keep pouring in there. I know this is going for peer review, but I think there's gonna be a problem with the traffic. I don't know how prepared the developer is to redo the intersection where Vinyl Street hits Oxford Street, which is Biner Street, because that's a mess now. Every day, at a certain time, it backs up from Pinehurst up North Oxford Street, past Otis. I've seen it all the way to Herd Street. And I live over there, so it's a pain in the neck to get home. Sometimes I gotta, if I'm coming up North Oxford Street, I gotta take a right on Herd Street, go around the block, and back up and go up over the street from the other side just to get home. It's a nightmare.
We're gonna share that traffic study as soon as we have it, and we're happy to, you know...
You got the apartment building there, you got twenty-plus houses on Nancy Drive, you have the nursery school there, the preschool there, and then you got the regular traffic. It's gonna be a nightmare in that intersection. I'm just saying.
We're gonna share that traffic study, and we're happy to have the consultant in at the next meeting, talk about all those issues.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
John, just with the, the base of the road and how that's constructed, is there something defined that we can give them how we want that?
Yeah, I already mentioned it. Twelve inches of gravel, two and a half inches of binder, inch and a half at top. That's four-inch roadway, that's standard, and you get a foot of gravel underneath.
It's so wet down there.
Well, if it, if they wind up with soft spots, they're gonna have to do something else. You have to use more Afi paper or something on the road to make stabilization. Any other questions from the board? Any other question from the audience? Please go up, state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Che, Oakwood Ave. Since we're talking about water sewer drainage... Since we're talking about water sewer drainage problems, up on Oakwood Ave, between number thirty-six and number eight, uh, number thirty-six and number thirty-eight, there's a catch basin up there that, way back in the mid-sixties, when I worked for the town, we put in. And there's an easement that goes between the two properties that dumps out onto Mr. Johnson's property. I don't know whether, when the gravel was mined out of there, that they damaged the pipe or not, but at this point right now, there's quite a gully on the backside going into his property. It's something that's gonna have to be addressed, otherwise somebody down in that area is gonna have one hell of a wet cellar.
I didn't see that on the plan anywhere.
It's, I don't even think it's on the plan.
That'll have to be identified on the next plan of what...
You know, this is, this is something that's up in our neighborhood that the town installed, I worked on it back in the mid-sixties. The town has an easement that goes between number thirty-six and number thirty-eight. And the pipe goes down into the woods and back, way back, when we put this in, that was all just wooded land.
Land and wetlands, yeah.
And it just, you know, dumped out into the wooded land.
If you look at the screen behind you, give me a rough idea...
I live on the street behind it, up on Oakwood Ave.
Give me a rough idea where that, where that comes into the lot?
I can't tell by, I can't tell by this, but...
Thirty-six and thirty-eight Oakwood?
Yeah, it's thirty-six and thirty-eight. It would come, it would come in on the, this would be what, Vinyl Street here?
Yes. The green line comes right down the edge of Vinyl Street, then it takes a left into the development.
You're up top.
Right up at the tier.
So, up top here somewhere. All right, so...
Higher, right up there. Up in this higher area is where it comes into that property and then just dumps out. Right now, there's a good-sized gouge up there where the water has been running.
Yeah, it was never riprap. They just put the...
So it's gonna, you know, it's gonna end up down on that property.
That'll be something the...
That needs to be addressed.
It'll be something the developer and the engineer will have to take a look at after town has an easement.
I'd be more than glad to, you know, walk over there with the developer and show it to him, and somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna come up with a plan as to what's gonna be done. Now, the people down below in his new development are gonna get flooded out, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
I appreciate it. Any other questions from the audience? Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion? Something else they thought?
No, just, I didn't want to not be up here. I just wanted to suggest, though, when you think about continuing on, I don't think we'll, we won't be ready for your next meeting, I don't believe. So I think, I don't know what this, what your schedule is exactly.
Want to make it the first meeting in November?
That's twelfth.
I think that makes...
You can always call Adam and continue again if you need to. It's not a problem.
No, that should be good. We just didn't want to put it on the next one, I think.
That's fine. There's a lot of work to do.
We're gonna go to zoning board. We need some, we just need some time.
No problem.
November twelfth.
Could I have a motion to continue this to our November twelfth planning board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Myself, John Reeves, and I. It's a vote. Hopefully, we'll see you the twelfth, Todd.
So November twelfth, sometime after seven o'clock, and just reiterating for the folks in the audience.
If you're not ready, just call Adam. We'll put it on the agenda, and I'll just continue and make a motion to continue it then whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you.
Next on the agenda is applicant JP Morgan Chase requesting special permit, site plan approval under section 3.2.5.1.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for bank, drive-through at 368 South Bridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map thirty-three, parcel eighty-one. This has been continued since our nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-four meeting. Excuse me. Is there anyone here representing JP Morgan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, just gonna let Adam wake the computer here.
Todd, you have a busy night tonight.
Again, Todd?
Yes.
Wow.
It's better to have them all grouped together.
This is why, this is why he lives in a one-point-five-million-dollar home. I picked the wrong career.
Yeah.
He's good at what he does. Very good, yeah. Sure.
Thank you. Drive-through.
Okay.
Now the school's back in session. I wonder if they've seen any of the games they're playing tonight.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Are you ready?
Hi, Todd.
Sorry. Todd Broder, Fletcher Tilton here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Nick Duers from Bowler Engineering. So we were here actually probably two months ago. We presented the project. It's a bank facility in the, in the Drury Square Village District. And we've utilized all of those particular provisions and requirements, and this particular proposal is for the special permit for the drive-through, which is ATM-only. I know we talked, we talked a little bit about that at the last hearing. Since we, since we last were here, we had to work out some details with other tenants in the plaza in terms of access into the site. That's why we took a little bit of a pause. So what you'll see, you know, Nick's got the, Nick's got the overlay plan here. It's the down below, Nick. So we circled and read the areas that we modified, because we did modify the plans since we were last before you. So the parking spaces up along the right-hand side of the, of the bank building and that dumpster location were modified pursuant, basically to comments from, from other interested parties to the current design, which makes those spaces up against Chase Bank on the right, that's now landscaped area with a little bit of a swing there for, for safety vehicles, and the dumpster is now on the other side, and a further landscaped area is, is in its place. All of this has been reviewed by Graves, the initial submission, and the additional changes submission. And I believe in Adam, I'm sure Adam can speak to it, but we have, I call it a clean review letter from them at this point.
Correct.
So no outstanding comments from them, and we've worked with, again, each of the departments that issued comments. I don't think there are anything, there's, there are any comments outstanding. And Nick can explain to you in more detail if you want to know exactly, exactly what changed, but those are the general, you know, issues that, that changed. So it's still the same proposal with those two red areas clouded out as the modifications to the site plan.
Neither one were really major changes. They were just like called tweaking.
Not really. I mean, honestly, the parking up against the building probably is better from a safety perspective for that accessway to run a little smoother, and I think that's really a, probably a pretty good change to the plan. And Chase is fine with that, and the other tenants are all now in alignment with that, so I think we have a better plan than we showed you last time.
Can you move it over on the screen, Todd, or is that it?
Can I move it over?
I mean, can you see more of the, the red area?
That's the, that's the football field.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the color of the track. I think he was looking, maybe looking for the areas you have highlighted in red that you made...
Do you want the red bubbles?
No, no, that's, it's okay.
Sure?
Yeah.
All right.
Question, you guys plan to do any additional parking lot improvements?
No, so, so this is really a limited area. You know, we've got, we've got only under control a certain portion of the, of the property. I understand there's some, some energy to, to develop or further develop the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond building, but I don't think anything's stuck yet. So I think that'll be, you know, something that'll have to work in concert with our plan here. But this has been, you know, it's gone through the existing tenants and, and landlord approval, of course.
I was gonna say, it's gonna be a lease, land lease.
What's your site fence, what's gonna be your site fence limits, I guess? Are people still gonna be able to access the shaws off of South Bridge Street?
Yes. Yes. That was critical to the discussions that we had with the other tenants, yes.
So is it gonna be a phased construction, I guess, where the building, and then eventually you're gonna go and do, because you have some landscaping right along the high school fence over there?
Right. Yeah, we're gonna have to, we have to, you know, per our various arrangements, we have to work in concert with, with others to make sure that that curb cut is open as long as it can be safely and, you know, be closed for as short a period of time as possible.
So, so it will be closed at some point, then?
It will have to be, because there's some manipulation to that area.
Okay. And then have you guys driven by on a Friday night during one of the football games?
Yes, sir.
Any concerns about the parking that, last time you guys said there's gonna be a couple signs to keep people from parking there?
I mean, I think, you know, does Chase want to invite people to use their parking lot on any given, on any given Friday night? No, but is the bank closed, and do they, are they gonna sit there and monitor who's there? I don't think so.
As long as they don't park in the ATM drive-through.
Yeah, I don't think it's really, from our perspective, you know, from Chase's perspective, it's not a problem. You know, we understand we're in a, kind of a common parking situation. We have to share it with people that might be parking a Bank of America, as much as that might not be such a joyous thing for the Chase Bank folks, but it's just reality.
I mean, it's privately owned property. The landlord could say no parking here at all during football games.
That hasn't been suggested.
No, it's never been an issue ever. Any other questions? Hey, could I have a motion to close the...
When are you guys looking to start construction? Sorry.
So we haven't been given an exact date. Chase, Chase is pretty, they typically file a building permit relatively quickly after getting local entitlement, so I, I would think they would be looking to start with foundation as early as this winter, but I'm not entirely sure what their, what their anticipated schedule is.
That's all, sorry.
It's okay. Could I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Jason?
Myself, John Reeves, and I. May I have a motion to approve the special permit for the drive-through?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
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 Jason's aye, myself, John Reeves, and I. It's a vote. And may I have a motion to approve the plan that's submitted and reviewed by Graves?
I move to approve the plan submitted by Graves.
May I have a second?
Second it.
Ron? Jason?
Aye.
Glenn, aye, myself, John Reeves, and I. It's an aye, it's a vote.
Thanks very much.
All right, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is a discussion over the Claire Drive subdivision covenant. This has been reviewed by town council, so I think our only requirement is to sign it, and Darlene has to notarize it and witness her signatures, huh?
Daniel.
Daniel, sorry, man. Anybody have any questions on the covenant?
Just a motion to accept the covenant or approve the covenant.
You have a motion to accept the covenant as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Reeves, and I. It's a vote. It is approved. Okay. Next on the agenda is no modification decisions on Zio Cemetery Road. We all have to sign that as we approved it. Have everybody signed that?
Yep.
Cemetery Road?
Yep, all set.
And next on the agenda is, could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September tenth, twenty twenty-four as submitted?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted for September tenth.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Reeves, and I. It's a vote. Is there any town plan or update? There's no new, unforeseen by the chair, so...
No. No offense.
Could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Reeves, and I. It's an aye, it's a vote. Meeting is now adjourned.